It is 5:30 PM on December 27th. Happy holidays, everyone. And I'd like to call this work session to order. Up first on our agenda are city updates. So Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, City Council, Mayor Gradisar. There are just two quick city updates this evening, and one is the COVID update. The one-week cumulative positivity case count that is on the CDPHE website for Pueblo County is 161.6, and the one-week positivity rate is 8.6, so below 10%. And Pueblo County has nine days of declining or stable patient hospitalizations at Parkview this week. The second update, we're going to start out with, it's an ARPA trash cleanup program. And we're going to start out with showing the video that has been created, and it is running on Fox 21.
Join our team as we team up to clean up Pueblo. All you have to do is pick up to pitch in.
And join us as we team up to clean up.
Hi, I'm Mayor Nick Gradisar, and I want to encourage you to team up to clean up our beautiful city. When we all work together, wonderful things can happen.
Scan the QR code now to help clean up Pueblo. Our time and temporary jobs are available, or volunteer your time today.
Team up to clean up, and here's the next update. The full-time coordinator for the program has been selected and finishing up the final pre-employment procedures required by the city's HR department. It is a she, and she's scheduled to start then immediately after the first of the year. I would think next Tuesday or Wednesday. They'll be interviewing, they're in the process of scheduling the interviews for part-time workers over the next two weeks. And there are nine currently in the queue for requesting employment. According to Parks and Rec Director Stephen Meyer, they hope to have a startup crew onboard and our first clean scheduled the last week of January of 2023. They're in full swing with marketing, part-time jobs, the billboards are up, the flyers are printed and are now being circulated at different locations to post throughout the city. That he's ordered, the F-250 pickup has been ordered at approximate cost of $46,500, and it should arrive in March of 2023. There are two F-150s, they've been ordered at an approximate cost of $37,500 each. They're expected in April, so a month later. And since there is mowing not yet in full swing by the Parks Department, they'll go ahead and use their current vehicles to begin the cleanups without having to worry about transporting the mowers. The target date for posting the external payroll provider with the RFP for same-day labor rates is scheduled the first week of January by the Finance Director. And then through some research, we have found that we were concerned about day labor and how to pay out in cash, and have found these day labor companies now hire via electronic interview process and schedule the employment by electronic, and then they transfer their day labor rate to the equivalent of an EBT card. So there is not actually cash that's transferred. And then the employee can take that card and use it for cash or other purchases. So I'm expecting that we might see companies that would be replying to the RFP that could either pay out in cash or through this EBT equivalent system. And the last, as you saw, the commercial. And that's the trash update, and that does conclude the city's updates for this evening. Do you have any questions or directions for next meeting?
Thank you, Ms. Solano. What questions are there from council? Um, so I was able to scan the QR code, and it took me to the employment opportunities on the city website. Once those positions are filled, will that reroute it to the actual, like, Team Up to Clean Up website, or like Pueblo Recycle Works or something?
There's no current, there's not any more current than just part-time employment access. So they have to just change the PR code. But it's also on the billboards, so they'll have to modify some billboards. It's also on the flyers at the moment. And we have heard from the Continue of Care and the mobile showers that individuals that have been accessing those two facilities have actually asked how to apply. So I think the QR code will be helpful in submitting and sending them over to Parks and Rec and to the Civil Service Office.
Great. Given that the last week of January is scheduled for the first cleanup tentatively, perhaps we should just schedule like a work session in like February-ish from the FTE on the program. Counselor Winner, do you have anything for Ms. Solano?
Yeah, I guess I just do, I do have one question. It's an inquiry, really. I have heard from a couple of different people that we had an employee that was poked by a needle. And I want to clarify if that's true or false, and if it is true, how do we plan on dealing with that, with people that are not employed directly by the city?
Counselor Winner, I have not been informed of an employee who was poked, whether it was a public works or the last cleanup or code enforcement or out of Parks and Rec, but I can certainly ask HR office and send you that update electronically, because if they turned it in, we would have had that record in the HR office on file.
Yeah, certainly, we wouldn't be able to hear the name, but I just wondered if the city, if that is true and how that's being handled.
I think that the Director of Parks and Rec for this does promotional cleanup through ARPA use. There will be training and the equivalent gloves, and so that's not a good thing that had happened if it did. So we'll find out if it did, and then what the training process is in place, and then what happens if that does occur.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from Ms. Solano? Great. Thank you, Ms. Solano, for those updates. Moving right along on our agenda, the next two presentations are around ARPA. First, we have United Way. So can I please have Ms. Farmer and Ms. Hicks to the podium, please? While they are getting to the podium, I wanted to call out that, to my fellow counselors, January 3rd is a canceled work session. However, we will be filling the 5th Monday, January 30th with work session presentations. I know normally we don't have work sessions on the 5th Monday. January is a little bit different because we're canceling January 3rd and moving it to January 30th. So I wanted to give that notice. Also, there's going to be an ARPA status update, so very similar to these two upcoming presentations, but more broad about ARPA on the 9th. Okay, take it away.
Well, good evening. My name is Shanna Farmer. I'm President and CEO of United Way of Pueblo County, and I'm joined by...
Good evening. My name is Bianca Hicks. I am Vice President of Strategic Operations for United Way of Pueblo County.
And I'd like to thank you all and the mayor for the opportunity to present this evening. Now, just as a recap of what United Way of Pueblo County stands for, for 100 years, we have worked to address the most pressing issues facing our community. And it sure has been a remarkable century of uniting people, uniting resources, uniting ideas, and uniting our community to create a better place for us to live and thrive. We are committed to being that catalyst for a sustainable, community-driven change and building that healthy future with empowerment for all. We really prioritize our work around four key pillars, and that is around economic mobility and opportunity, youth success, crisis intervention, and nonprofit capacity development. In just the past two years, United Way of Pueblo County has leveraged over $7 million in funds raised, emergency assistance, administration, in-kind contribution, volunteer time, and dollars put back into our community through our outreach and our programs.
While Shanna is getting that working, one of the things that is really important about the work we do at United Way is we do not do that work alone. And so this slide is a cross-section of the many community partners that we work with every single year. We work with at least 65 community partners on an annual basis. During COVID, we saw that rocket to over 100 due to outreach work in additional counties outside of Pueblo County. One of the things that we like to just show this here is that these are not only folks that are grantees through our grant-making work, but these are also program partners. These are partners that receive funds through us, through donor-directed contributions. And as I noted, this is a cross-section of the many organizations, nonprofits, and community partners that we work with.
And as we leave the groundwork for the project we're talking about tonight, I think it's really important to think about the economic impact that nonprofits have in our community and across the state. And we really do serve as a key service that when there are for-profits or governments that they can't do or aren't willing to do, that's when nonprofits step in, and usually at a fraction of the cost. So we serve as an economic engine, and nonprofits account and contribute to Colorado's economy in so many ways. Based on a 2017 Colorado Nonprofit Economic Impact Study, nonprofits accounted for $40 million back into the economy. And across the state, 11% of the workforce, and here in Pueblo, 7.4% of the workforce. So we're involved in helping to, you know, make decisions and partnerships with other organizations and also raising awareness of issues most pressing for our community. We also foster, we as a United Way of Pueblo County also foster economic growth through our community investments, and we strengthen many of our local nonprofits. So the project we're presenting tonight is the next step to expanding those partnerships with our local nonprofits and the community at large.
So Shanna mentioned laying the groundwork for the project that we'll be talking about in just a few minutes. One of the things that, as I mentioned earlier, our partnerships really are at the center of the work that we do, and we do nothing alone. So one of the things that we've been hearing over the years in working with our funded partners and working with our program partners is really there are a lot of needs that our nonprofit community needs help with. The work that they do is absolutely critical to our community and to the health of our community, but we don't want to just make decisions on our own and say, this is what this organization needs, and this is what this organization needs. So we have those informal conversations that we have, but we wanted to go ahead and put together an informal, you know, definitely not super scientific survey out to our nonprofit community here in town. Of our respondents, we had 19 respondents. We know that this is going to be something that we continue on as time goes on. We'll keep reaching out to our community to see how those needs change. Most of our respondents from the survey were in the area of youth services. We also had folks who were serving for family support and crisis intervention and basic needs. And you can see this is a fairly large cross-section from different service areas in the community that responded to the survey. So one of the things that we asked that we thought was particularly important to focus on is how our nonprofit community has been affected by COVID. We know that COVID really provided, in some cases, a big influx of dollars into our community through ARPA and other means, through foundations shifting their focus to COVID-related needs. But we wanted to find out where those organizations are now. So we had about 63.2% of respondents that felt that they were either their organization was in the condition of the same as they were prior to COVID to significantly worse. This was something that I think we knew anecdotally, but to see it on the screen like that really stood out to us. We also asked, this little word puzzle here, we asked about, as COVID dollars dissipate, what are the greatest needs that our nonprofit community is seeing? Number one, by and large, was adequate staffing levels. They were concerned about that. Increased expenses, increased levels of need, budget reductions, and concerns with fundraising. And as you can see here as well, one of the questions we asked was, what changes have you seen in demand or need for your services in the past year alone? We have 42% of our respondents who are seeing significantly more demand for their services. And to help bring the conversation along as well, we asked about what services would be beneficial to support their mission and their organization capacity. The top five are listed on the screen, collaboration and service alignment, 68.4% responded that. Marketing and community-wide data, there was a tie there, 47.4%. Trainings, DEI trainings, professional development, grant-making, grant-writing, and guidance on applying for grants and funding opportunities.
So we certainly never want to lay out concerns without a solution. And so our solution to some of these concerns is what we are calling a nonprofit lead center. And we believe that major challenges require simple solutions, and so this is what we're presenting to you tonight. The Nonprofit Leadership Empowerment and Development Center, or the LEAD Center, it would build upon the solid foundation of service that we've provided to the community, but it really speaks to the needs of our community as they stand today. And we've had a lot of stakeholders involved in the process, in addition to talking with our nonprofits, surveying them. Also, our Board of Trustees has been very involved and other partners and stakeholders. This concept was developed, and our partners really expressed a desire for us to help address root causes in the systems change while providing that capacity building, leadership development, and funding opportunities to achieve those lasting results. Our goal has always been to serve individuals and nonprofits in our community. And when we think about building the future of Pueblo, actually, this building is part of that, as we would call our future building. So the purpose of the LEAD Center would serve as a central hub for convening, strategizing, collaborating, and increasing partnerships, innovation, and capacity for area nonprofit organizations. And we know that our community has a vibrant nonprofit sector, and no nonprofit would be expected or forced into participating in this project, but it would be something that it would be made available to them. The LEAD Center would serve as a key resource for nonprofits and the people who work and volunteer with them. It would allow for shared meeting space, office space, and a number of services that I'll discuss on this next slide. We thought a lot about the LEAD Center programming and took a lot of feedback from our partners in that process. And so the LEAD Center would really work to amplify the power of our local nonprofit community and the nonprofit professionals by supporting that capacity building. And so as part of that, the nonprofit collaboration and innovation hub would provide networking opportunities for stimulating thought and dialogue about effective practices, philanthropy, volunteerism, and strategic partnerships. Additionally, there would be technology and resources made available. Many of the technology that we're all using, especially in light of COVID, it can be very costly for nonprofits, and not every nonprofit, I think we've been on a lot of Zoom meetings, and not everybody has the technology. But this space would provide all of that that nonprofits could utilize at no cost to them. We'd have the nonprofit lead training program, and we would provide and coordinate education and training focused on best practices, innovation, and building the capacity. We would certainly partner with organizations such as Colorado Nonprofit Association and other experts in the field and bring those trainings to Pueblo. Let's stop having everybody have to go up north, and we'll keep that, the time and resources here in our community. Additionally, the center could offer shared resources, and this would really help to alleviate administrative and overhead cost burdens for nonprofits who wanted to participate. This would place operational tasks in the hands of trusted professionals, allowing more time and resources to be directed towards that mission work and making that impact. So our goal would be to help really lower those overhead costs so that they can continue to do that direct service work. It would also serve as a training center for United Way of Pueblo County's Community Impact Fellowship, a program designed to empower and develop future public service leaders while engaging in special projects. Office space would also be made available, so nonprofits who need a little bit of extra office space could actually rent space for below-market value rates. And so that would give them an opportunity, if they don't have the need to have a large facility, but they need an office or two, this would be a perfect opportunity for them. And additionally, we would hope that this would become a regional training hub and also encourage others from even outside of Pueblo to take advantage of it, further stimulating that economic impact. And finally, it would also serve as the home for the Financial Empowerment Center, which I think you all are pretty well aware of. It will be sort of the home base, in addition to co-locations, and we're really proud to partner with the city of Pueblo on this project. And I also wanted to say, that project is fully funded, so we're not asking you for any money on that project today. But as you can see, there's lots of different opportunities to pull into this type of hub. Some of the outcomes would be those increased efficiencies, really leveraging resources to make them go as far as they possibly can, working together to support those community-wide solutions, and really thinking strategically about how do we leverage the resources we have, both directly and indirectly for that economic impact, in addition to providing for individuals and nonprofits. We do anticipate the cost of this project to be about $1.7 million. And as far as sustainability is concerned, United Way of Pueblo County has been around for 100 years, and our Board of Trustees is committed to ensuring the longevity of the project. And so we've also been in conversations with other donors to help sustain the project, but they would love to see a local investment first. And so ARPA funds are a really great opportunity to do something that we've never done before. We've always made sure that we don't, direct funds away from the direct services that either we or our partners provide, and so having some funds to start a project like this would really, really go a long way. We've also talked with the county, and the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners has scheduled us to present in January as well to see if they might be a partner. We know that much more can be accomplished together than in silos. And so we're here to present this project as a way to do more of that as a nonprofit community. We're really excited to celebrate our upcoming 100, and we are excited even more so to serve for the next 100 years. So thank you so much for your time, and we're open for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Thank you, Ms. Hicks, for that presentation. What questions are there from council? Counselor Graham?
Thank you for the presentation. Are there other LEAD centers in other communities in Colorado?
The closest one that we are aware of, it's actually United Way of Laramie County. And they have many of the services, and just to be transparent, we certainly use some of those ideas and best practices, and what they've learned as we put this proposal together. And they've seen some incredible results of offering these shared services. And I don't think they offer office space to the level that we are wanting to here because we know there's a need, but they are doing a number of these things, and it's working very, very well.
Colorado Nonprofit Association is another organization as well that has basically built a building, and then they offer office space to nonprofits and additional training and things like that as well. We call it LEAD, but it's kind of that central hub for nonprofits.
Other questions or comments?
Hi, how much are you asking for this evening?
$1 million.
And how much do you think, what's the percentage and reduction of overhead that you think you guys are going to be reducing by collaborating together? I know that overhead takes up a lot of funding.
That's a really, really excellent question, and I think it's going to come down ultimately to the size of the building, the number of offices that we're able to lease out, the number of nonprofits that are participating. We already know there's a handful of nonprofits who have said we'd love to have space there. So to really give you an authentic number, we'd have to be a little bit further in, I think, in terms of what we have available, but we know that, you know, we even think of things like internet, and that's a small cost, but it starts to add up, especially for these smaller nonprofits. So I would love, I love that question, and I would love to really dive into that and hopefully report back to you on that once we're underway.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Atencio?
Laramie County, have they seen a drop in their poverty rate, or increase in the graduation rate, or the drop in the food insecurity numbers? Are they actually seeing bang for their buck? Because that's what I would like to see. We keep seeing a steady rate, if not an increase, in the poverty rate here in Pueblo. The unemployment rate, I understand, is pretty decent for Pueblo itself, but I know for a fact that Latinos in this city are far more unemployed than the rest of the community, underemployed. Are they making a difference? Is this program going to make a difference here? And is it making a difference there that you can see?
I can confidently answer part of that question, and it certainly is making a difference. It's really helped their nonprofits to build their capacity, especially at a time where we've seen such an uptick in need. When we think about the last couple of years, I think every community has seen such an increased demand, and so it's hard. You know, apples, it's really apples to avocados almost right now in terms of what is their project done in terms of some of those outcomes. But I also like to think about what would happen without some of that if nonprofits weren't poised to get additional funding, if they weren't poised to have those additional trainings to really enhance the work that they do. And so it's certainly making a difference. I can answer that. But in terms of exact numbers on some of those outcomes, those are harder to measure when you go further down, because we're really looking at the nonprofit as the client in this model, and then they're then serving the individuals.
Yeah, and I think each community, they really pick their particular focus area. I know that Laramie County is really big on childhood success. So I know that they've seen some really great strides in that area. They have a full daycare program that they're working on and getting additional folks to sign up as childcare providers that are really doing a lot in early childhood education. So in those areas, I think you're probably going to see longer terms before you start to see that big shift. But they're really working from those root causes of early childhood success.
Oh, yeah, understood. I mean, we're talking millimeters when it comes to progress in terms of equity and things like that, but it just seems like, are we going to get a bang for our buck? I like the way you're thinking. This is really thinking bigger, like I've always said. Think bigger, Pueblo does exactly what you're doing. But there has to be outcomes to, and we have to see something positive in those terms of the poverty rate has to go down. We have to do something around it. And I understand that you're helping the nonprofits, and they do, basically, they do all the work, but we've got to start asking more of them, I guess.
And I love the outcome question, and I think that's something that we would want to be very intentional about tracking as far as what's working, what's not, and how do we make those outcomes happen.
Mayor?
Madam Chair, members of the council, this was a proposal that came from several different agencies. When we opened up the funding for ARPA, that we have some kind of center where these nonprofits would be able to get what's been described here, or rent office space, or have access to meeting rooms or access to technology that would allow them to participate in things. It was rated by the community pillars that ranked them. And we've had numerous meetings in the mayor's office about this. We obviously didn't recommend funding at the beginning because we wanted to see how far into the ARPA process we would be, how much money we'd have remaining. We're now prepared to recommend to the city council, we'd like to present an ordinance to you that would recommend a million dollars of our ARPA funds be used towards this project. We think that in the long run, this will make a big difference in the community in terms of being able to coordinate and provide services to these individuals who've been affected by COVID-19 and who are the marginally placed members of our society, if you will. And we think this will only enhance services that can be delivered to them. It will coordinate the services to some extent that will be delivered to them, and will allow these agencies to be much more efficient and effective in delivering services to this vulnerable group of people. So we expect that if council's in agreement that we'll put an ordinance together recommending a million dollars of ARPA money be used towards this project. And as you heard, that's not going to cover the entire cost of this project, and we'll make sure that our money's protected so that United Way won't get the money unless it's a go, unless everything else is in place. But as we looked at these proposals that came in, we felt like United Way was the agency in the community who could organize this and who could deliver and put this center together in such a fashion that it would make a long-term difference in the community. So that's what our recommendation to you is going to be, that we fund this to the tune of a million dollars.
Other, Counselor Flores?
Yes, thank you for that report. I got a lot more information because I had heard of your project, but I'm assuming that the nonprofits that would be housed in this building that you'll be purchasing would be treated like tenants, and will they be expected to pay rent, I guess? That's my question.
Yes, for the office space itself, there would be below-market value rates just to help with the long-term sustainability, but it would be significantly less than they would find in the, you know, the commercial market. And then they would have a lot of access to meeting space and technology. And even nonprofits who did not house in the building would also have access to those as well. And even nonprofits who did not house in the building would also have access to those as well, based on availability.
You know, one of the things that has occurred over the last couple of years because of COVID was a lot of nonprofits that came, you know, to our council that were basically struggling and some were in trouble, some just needed some help. I would imagine that this center could take that place, that bringing so much information and so many other nonprofits that you could accumulate a lot of ideas. If we ever find other nonprofits that are in trouble, I'm assuming that that's one of the goals that you have. And that that would be a benefit of having such a center along with maximizing maybe on grant money that's available now that you're centralized. And also, you know, providing the, the expertise and the education that you need to, to apply for grants and finding those that we don't know about.
Absolutely. We would hope we would be able to leverage additional resources for our community. And, you know, I certainly have concerns as more and more of the federal dollars for COVID dissipate. How are nonprofits, how they would answer that question in the survey, the state of their organization? I'm, I think what we're going to, we have not seen the worst of it for some of our nonprofit community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know that the overall project is around 1.7 million dollars. What is, what is included in that budget?
So that budget includes a building purchase and renovations. So depending on the final building and the renovations needed, it would also include center operations for the next year and also technology and all the, you know, all of the extra stuff that would go in the center. So depending on what the tenants needed, you know, the conference space, furniture, the smart boards, the, you know, the owls, all that technology is included as part of that project or project budget.
And besides the space that Councilman Flores were just talking about, they're going to rent some type of space, are there going to be any other costs for nonprofits like, like for trainings or capacity building or what does that look like?
Yeah. So, you know, there's a lot of things that go into the business model. It's, you know, obviously we want to make it as affordable for the nonprofits. But we also want to make sure it's sustainable. And so we would ensure to make all of that as affordable as possible. And that can be such a affordable to one nonprofit, may not be to a smaller nonprofit. And so there may be sliding scales based on some of that for the nonprofits. And then I think it also depends on the trainings that are coming in to what can we offset? What can we fund? How can we pay for that?
Yeah. And one of the things we've talked a lot about is just levering, leveraging our partnerships and our relationships with other funders and training providers in the state. You know, having an opportunity to have a place that we can bring some of those folks down from Denver and other places where we can get those at much lower rates than you would if you were, you know, nonprofit A, going to get that training on your own, you know, without kind of a network or an umbrella that you can leverage for that. So I think that's definitely something that we've talked a lot about is, is really getting with our funding partners and knowing that, you know, the foundations in the community especially are having similar conversations of how can we better support our nonprofits? This would be one avenue of that.
I know that we talked briefly about childcare and childcare is such a huge need specifically in nonprofits where they're making, you know, really middle income wages. And typically there's more women in nonprofits than men. I'm curious if there's any conversations about having some type of childcare services provided at the center for the nonprofits who would use it.
I think we would be very open to that, to see what the need is and to really assess that. And so it's something that, you know, we certainly are mindful of and we want to be supportive of that, but it would also be based on, on need and what makes the most sense.
Other questions or comments?
I do. I have a question.
Councilwoman.
Sorry to interrupt you. Hey, thanks for that presentation. I am kind of confused here. It sounds to me like almost a maker space for the nonprofit community.
In what sense?
Well, you're providing, you know, internet services and office space for a fee. You know, offices and conference rooms. I mean, this sounds just like a maker space. Also, is this kind of taking the place of Petco? They're building downtown where they offer office space and receptionists and things like that for folks? Are those offices full? And also another question I have is this will definitely be smaller nonprofits because I doubt if United Way is going to move into this building or Neighborhood Works or Pueblo Housing or Public Food Project. So who's going to be using this facility?
Those are excellent questions. And so as far as who will be in the building, we would move our operations into the building to ensure that we're able to operate the center and all that comes with that. And while I don't want to name them publicly, but we've had a number just because of their current agreements with their landlords and things like that. But we have had a number of smaller nonprofits, you're correct, Councilwoman Warner, smaller nonprofits. So we also have had one larger nonprofit in town who would really like to house their administrative offices in the building. So I think it's a mix because as we've seen nonprofits grow to meet the needs and demands in the community, they've had to increase some of their staffing capacity as well. And so that could help with some of that overflow. Whereas they may already have their own building, but they don't have room for maybe some of the administrative work. And so it would, it would be a mix.
Okay. I guess this would be a question for Nick. Mayor, is there any room in the Wells Fargo building for these folks?
Well, there wouldn't be any room in the places that the city proposes to purchase. What the county, the county really hasn't announced what plans they have for it, but so I don't, I don't know.
That's a, that's a huge building. I don't know, Shannon. Have you checked with them about space?
We have talked a little bit about that and I think we'll, we'll know more once we present in January with the county.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Councilor Maishri?
So when you figure your cost about, what's, what's the square footage of its size of building that you're looking for in order to accommodate the project?
We'd be looking around 10,000 square feet.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions. Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Thank you, Ms. Farmer, for that presentation. And good luck presenting to county. Our next then presentation around an ARPA proposal is from the Southern Colorado Harm Reduction Association. So can I have Ms. Solano to the podium, please? It's okay. Are we, so Councilor Tencio brings up a really good point that we need to be giving direction to mayor's office about this, about the previous ARPA proposal ordinance. Counselor Martinez Ortega for moving it forward for first, for an ordinance for 1 million from ARPA to fund the lead center.
Yeah, I think that a million sounds a little heavy for the ask and I would like to see the, the county also contribute some of their ARPA funds towards this project because that's a pretty big project. And I would like to also see as, as United Way is putting together a, a bigger coalition of nonprofits. There's also the Rocky Mountain Sir that also does the same thing, but even on a more micro level. And so I think the equitable thing to do would be to also be building in the RMSER. Re-look at their, I would like to see the mayor's office re-look at their ARPA proposal as well, because 1 million for United Way does seem a little heavy when we have about 9 million left. So 1 million, I think that's a little much. And yeah, that's where I'm at.
Well, we have looked at Rocky Mountain Sir and we still have discussions ongoing with them with respect to a piece of property that they own that we're talking about purchasing from them. We could use for affordable housing. It's a property over on the east side. I forgot. Was it Span School? Span School, it's just sort of become a blight on the neighborhood there. The problem with Rocky Mountain Sir and their Lake Avenue property is that they do not have a sustainable plan in my judgment of how that can work. That building is mortgage. We've talked to them about that a little bit. I think they've got like a 1.8 million dollar mortgage on that property with a payment of like $18,000 a month. So we want to try to help them in their work, but United Way and Rocky Mountain Sir, in my judgment, they're completely different in terms of whether or not the plan is sustainable and can move forward and make a long-term difference in the community. So that's the concern that I expressed to Rocky Mountain Sir. We'd like to help you. You know, we'll purchase this property from you and you can use that to meet some of your expenses and make things work. At my understanding is they had to lay everybody off at Rocky Mountain Sir. Everybody's there as a volunteer now at this point. But I think we're awaiting an appraisal. I think we have had on the Span School property, a Phase One environmental done. I haven't seen the results of that at this point, but that's about six acres of property over there that would be a terrific affordable housing site. So that's, that's what we're working on with Rocky Mountain Sir. I don't think a million dollars is too much here. You know, that puts the burden of on United Way of getting from the county, the other 700,000 or from some of its funders, 700,000 in order to move the project forward. But I just think that, as you heard, 100 years in this community, United Way does good work and I, I just feel like it's sustainable and will make a long-term difference if we invest the money there.
Well, I mean, I think United Way is a, is a giant in our community, of course, but they're also too big to fail at this point in our community. And so when we're looking at practicing equity and looking at the equitable solutions, part of that is helping the smaller nonprofits who actually do house a number of nonprofits. I know that because we, a nonprofit that I volunteer with, we have an office there. And so as your community findings report shows that 80% of the people want to see what we have improved as opposed to new. I think going at it with from the nonprofit grass, grass tops kind of a organization to help convene those folks. And then also the grassroots type of organization to help convene those folks, the Rocky Mountain Sir folks. I think if we do the both and approach, that would be the most beneficial to, and that would take our ARPA dollars the longest, the furthest.
And we pay rent. I mean, the Public Food Project has an office in a classroom in Rocky Mountain Sir building. So I mean, we, we try to help them. But I have to be convinced that what they've got there is a sustainable plan. We're not just putting money in a black hole. And right now I haven't seen that plan. I mean, I know that they're out trying to get grants so that they can make it work. But, you know, Rocky Mountain Sir had the Head Start contracts. And two years ago, they lost those Head Start contracts. That's what that building was used for. And since then, I think they've been trying to figure out what they want to do. And
Well, I think that they're currently helping the folks who are some of the most vulnerable and who need the most help out there.
Right.
And that's what I mean.
Distributions.
Yeah, from their food distributions. And those happen multiple times during the week. And so that's what I mean about the grassroots and then also the grass tops of the nonprofit organizations. So I do think that a million is a little heavy. And yeah, the burden is on them to get the rest of that 1.7 or the rest of the 1.7 that they need.
Councilor Graham?
Oh, I'm, I'm good with the million. I think it's a, a great idea to have United Way more visible. I met with Farmer last week and I didn't even know where the United Way was located. It's, you know, on the top of a bank building. And so for the general public to be able to walk in and get services so quickly and have all these nonprofits under one roof, I think it'd be very beneficial.
Councilor Tencio?
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of the 1 million because I, I just think a, a central point where nonprofits can go to get all the information they need and the training and all this other stuff. A central point is equal. And Rocky Mountain Sir and United Way, two different things altogether. I believe, I, I agree with you, Mayor. And I want to help Rocky Mountain Sir as much as we possibly can too, so they could be successful because they do do good work. But they're completely different.
I'm in support as well. Councilman Flores?
What we're talking about here is a process and it sounds like there's still a lot more information to get. And it sounds like there, at this stage, I would, I'm all for this. Assuming that we're going to get all of the additional information as we go along. The, the contribution by the county, you know, a location of the building, maybe a little bit more financial information. So it sounds to me like you've got conditions before we actually make the decision of the million dollars. And I don't have a problem with that number right now. I think it's, it's a fair number. So I would say continue. You know, looking at this project and it sounds to me like this council will get more information sometime toward the latter part of January as to where we're at. And I just want everybody to know that there's more information coming. I'm just one quick legal question and that is since this million dollars is going to go toward building, toward a building, are we going to be taking a lean on this or is that, it's going to be separate?
Yeah. And I, I think some of those details need to be worked out. We're not going to take a lean on the building. It's not going to be a loan. This is money that we're going to put into this project.
Okay.
And we're not necessarily buying the building. I mean, that's, United Way is going to purchase the building as part of the project. We're contributing a billion dollars towards this project. We want to make sure that, you know, they're not overpaying for the building, for instance, and those kinds of things. But this is their project and it'll be their, their building and they'll be the ones that run it. We'll just want to do our due diligence to make sure that they'll be able to do what they say they can do if we put in a million dollars towards it.
Right. Thank you.
Councilor Maishri?
They have a proven track record. They've served this community for many, many years. 30 years ago, I remember putting part of my paycheck towards donating to the United Way. And so they have the proven track record. And so I'm behind that. I would like to see them, the nonprofits collaborate in one, one area where a successful nonprofit like yourself can oversee and make sure that, you know, they're, they're either succeeding or they're not. And so that, that, that sounds like a good plan. So I'm for it.
Councilor Winner?
I'm, I'm with Dennis and with Vincente on, on both of those. So I guess I really don't need to repeat it. I think more information is needed and I also agree with Vincente as far as what, what he mentioned. So I'm just, I just need more information.
So it sounds like though the majority of council is supportive. We will also, just to keep in mind, we'll have an ARPA status update January 9th, which is the next work session where we'll get a full rundown of the money that we have left to spend and all those numbers. So it sounds like majority is good for first reading is what I'm hearing. Otherwise it can be corrected.
Do you think that we should see also too what the county is willing to put in before we make final decisions?
What we could do, because it would need two readings. Sorry, Shanna. I dismissed you. When are you going to go present to the county? They're scheduled for January 17th. Should we just then have the first reading on January 23rd? Does that work? Cool. Thank you. Sorry Jude. And the guest, can you please state your name for the record?
Jess Garcia.
Just Garcia, Southern Colorado Harm Reduction.
Great. And then whenever you are ready.
My on? Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, Councilmembers, Mayor. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Jude Solano. I am the co-founder and CEO of Southern Colorado Harm Reduction. And we also have William Brummett, architects firm in Denver, but he's in Salida. So he's also available to answer any questions regarding our project. So we were founded in 2017. It's hard to believe that it's been, we just passed our fifth year. And we have doubled and tripled in size and scope over those five years and we're very proud of that. So primary focus of our organization, we do a number of things, but our services include support and healthcare for people that are actively using drugs in recovery, advocacy for people experiencing homelessness as well as the disruptions that come along with that. So everything I'm going to talk about tonight, I know it may seem like I'm leaning more heavily on the criminal justice system. But I can tell you that probably 75% of the clients that we serve that are struggling with homelessness, with poverty, with lack of resources and just sick have been criminal justice involved. So it intersects with everything that we do. So I just want to make that point as we go into this. The US is only 1% or 5% of the world's population, yet we incarcerate 25% of the world's incarcerated population. I've said this before and I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but it is something that we need to examine when we're all trying to address the crises that are in our communities. Colorado is right in line with national average. United States overall incarcerates 664 people per 100,000. And Colorado incarcerates roughly 614 people per 100,000. This is a very important graphic. I just, I know it's related more toward the prison population, but you know, anecdotally as well as objectively, what, what we do is most of the people that we are serving in all of our programs, not just the Harm Reduction Programs, but our Wages Program, our CDOC Program, all the different programs that we have. This is the population. Many of them were living in poverty. They grew up in poverty. They grew up in foster care system. They grew up not completing high school education. And those rates are evident in terms of who is at risk. So when we're talking about this and I really feel broadly this this covers even our academic system, the educational system. We have so many kids that we're losing and we have to look at what the trajectory is that they're on and this gives a picture of that. So I'm just going to skim through this really quick. The important thing here is 123% of the felony drug cases that were convicted in Colorado's courts, they were for people with possession charges. These were not the big cartels that we all want to see get arrested and incarcerated and dealt with. These are, I call it the low hanging fruit. And I know that's a terrible thing to say, but it's true. And so we are seeing more and more individuals coming to us from the CDOC system now that were incarcerated for drug convictions when they had a problem and they were sick at one point in time. Yes, they did bad things. Yes, they did. They may have stolen. They may have gotten into bad situations, but most of the time it's a possession charge. So this is just an overview. I'm going to give you a deeper dive into what we're currently doing. We do provide, all of our services are free, no matter who it is. We provide public health services, HIV/HEPC testing, vaccinations, housing, food access, employment, education opportunities. We are very criminal justice involved and I'll get to that shortly. We also provide overdose prevention naloxone, fentanyl test strips and syringe service program. The overdose prevention services, I just want to elaborate on that a little bit. I have actually had the opportunity to provide a lot of education to the school district this past year. Just a week ago, I provided a Narcan training to the school counselors at Caesar Chavez Academy. And that's been, you know, the word has gotten out and we will provide those trainings and also provide them with kits of Narcan. Been doing that now for probably three years within the school district 60. The other thing is, is that's been novel to me is provider, medical provider offices. I've been providing them Narcan. For some reason, they cannot get naloxone through their businesses to store in their offices. So I did a training about a month ago at a surgeon's office. So that, that just goes to show how beneficial Harm Reduction Programs are. This is our flyer. It's very busy. I'm just going to run through really quick all of the programs that we are operating currently. We have the LEAF Program, which is life empowerment and fulfillment training for people within the prison, with the jail system, excuse me. We are actually providing services in the jail. Now we've been waiting to do that since before COVID and we just started that system probably a month ago. We also provide that, that program to an alternative high school here for kids that are underserved. We have the peer recovery specialists, which are an incredible team of people that I could not do this without them. They are people with lived experience that are getting trained and and brought up in their own professional skills to be able to provide services to people. And we have the CRAFT Program, the Community Reinforcement Family Training, AcuDetox, which is ear acupuncture. And we have, we have teachers that call us and request this program for in services. So we're providing that service to anyone in the community. We have the Moms Grant, which is a program for maternal opioid model. This is for anyone who wants to have a healthy pregnancy and maybe has struggled with substance use disorders. And we provide them with all the support systems and basically navigating the system for when they do finally have their child, that they are also ready to step into wellness and stay in recovery. We have the Clothing Bank, which has been a huge, huge success. And we've had, we have many partners in the community that are just been phenomenal. What happened? Okay. Yeah. I lost the That's okay. So just want to go through, I want to finish our programming. We have the also the syringe service program and our overdose prevention services. We also have the Wages Program. Wages stands for Work and Gain Employment and Education Skills. That is a statewide, actually a nationwide program. It was part of the Second Chance Act and we are the recipient of that program for this part of the state. We are referred, people are referred to us that are discharging from the DOC system. We currently have a, a home available for people who don't have a place to live and we help these folks get into education or a job or develop some type of skill. I've hired a few of them because many of them want to develop into a peer specialist. So I've also become an employer as a result of this program. We also have healthcare partners. We have Care on Location, which is an urgent care pop-up clinic. And as the trend of healthcare, telehealth is becoming more and more widely accepted and utilized because there just aren't enough providers to service the rural and frontier areas. And that includes Pueblo. We do not have enough providers. So that has been a very successful program as well. We also have partnered with Front Range Clinic, which is a medication assisted treatment program. And they are on site a few days a week. So what are we up to? This is just a year to date of what we're doing and the types of services and the need and demand for our services. We have given out 1,000 pieces of cold weather supplies. That includes coats, gloves, hats, hand warmers, tents, sleeping bags, blankets. And we did not start giving those supplies out until probably end of September. So that's a year to date just from September. We've given out 300 hygiene kits, over 1,000 plus food packages. And this is mostly obviously for our homeless population that we, that we serve. We've given 1,000 pieces of clothing, which includes shoes, pants, hats, coats, everything, assistance. Now I want to kind of shed, shine a light on this because we do not have resources specifically to provide this kind of assistance, but we're going to get it done. That's how Southern Colorado Harm Reduction has been operating for the past five plus years. We find a way. But the demand is, is great and I just want my local government to be aware that we're doing these things. We're helping people get into hotels. If we've had several women with children, with young children that have received a housing voucher, but they don't have the place. So we will put them up in a hotel until they can make that transition. As a result of that, people have started their recovery and come to our medication assisted treatment provider and stayed in recovery because we supported them in the housing and food. We've given over about 1,500 bus passes. We give out bus passes primarily to get from A to Z in terms of people's their appointments. We don't just randomly give out bus passes. This is to get to a doctor. This is to get to a counselor. This is to get to social services. It is for all of those reasons and we purchase and we provide those bus passes for people to get there. As I mentioned, the naloxone trainings, so we provide the kits and the trainings to schools, businesses, healthcare providers. We've given out just in our syringe service program and overdose prevention program, 3,000 naloxone kits. We've given out 1,700 fentanyl test strips and they are still showing 50% of the, the feedback that we're getting, the drugs are still testing positive, primarily meth. And to date, again, this is a year to date from fiscal year to date, we have collected 190,000 contaminated syringes and disposed of them properly off of our streets. So the challenges of Harm Reduction Organizations, you know, this past year for the State of Union address, when the President of the United States says the word Harm Reduction in his address, that's, I feel like we've arrived. So in terms of integration into the public health system, we are becoming more and more sought out in terms of, of healthcare resources because we can get those people from us to the, to the healthcare providers. Also, you know, we, we want to be supportive and commend our local law enforcement for the unbelievable work that they do. It is not unnoticed within our organizations what happens at that level. And we want to be a support system, not a hindrance. That prison to pipeline is, is still unbelievable. You know, we, we continue, and this isn't just Pueblo. This is not just Colorado. We continue to think that we can address the war on drugs and the drug crisis with incarceration and punishment. And if it worked, we wouldn't be sitting here. So now to the fun stuff. SCARA is building capacity. We purchased 219 West Northern last November of 21. And we are, we have plans drawn. We have half our budget and we are ready to start construction. This is if you'd never been in this building, it is 14,754 square feet. This is one of the entrance areas. This is where I hope a future grocery store will be. It's stuck. Okay. This is the second floor. Next slide. There you go. Next slide. In this, if anybody has driven past the building lately, all of these windows have been broken over the past year. So they're boarded up. You know, we, we have to get started. We have to get moving. There is absolutely no reason for there's no electricity. There's no running water. There's nothing in the building right now. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay. Next slide. This is, and I can certainly send this electronically to everybody because this is actually the layout of the new project. There are two entrances off of Northern into the building. The first building that's in yellow on the, the first area is going to be a welcome center. And this is, you know, it's a community center. So we want it to be a welcoming area for everybody in Pueblo. So that is going to be an area that where there's going to be charging stations, couches, there'll be coffee bar restrooms in this area. It can also be utilized for different communities, speaking of the smaller nonprofits that do not have a place to be, they can come and do their programming from here. We want to have the art community come and have art shows in this area and just open up that broader vision of what a good neighborhood should be like. And then as you go toward the back, the area in green on the left is going to be the Harm Reduction Services. And we are expanding those services to include showers, locker rooms for the homeless folks and also free laundry services. So they can come in, get cleaned up. You know, there's a huge encampment on the other side of the bridge from where we are. And we see those folks all the time. We feed them all the time. We have conversations. So this will bring them in the building, not just for something to eat, but also to sit with our peers and start having conversations. What can we help you with? Where can we get you? Are you in crisis? All of those things we can address at this level. Now, as you go through the, the first floor there on the left, the area, you just make a big circle and then the area in the front toward, on the right is going to be a future grocery store. There is not a fresh food or fruit or vegetable to be found in Besmer. That's a travesty for a community that has such wonderful produce that comes out of it. So we have been in conversation. I have a few wonderful folks that have been working with me that have been having conversations with the different major grocery store chains that might be interested in providing and setting up in this area. And on the second floor, there is going to be, I don't know if you could see from there, but that on the second floor, the area on the right, the, the area in green is the healthcare wing. That is already going to house urgent care, is going to house medication assisted treatment. And I've been in conversation with behavioral health providers, including Servicio Estela Rasa and Health Solutions that are very interested in utilizing this as a satellite. We also have the library district that wants to do a satellite in the yellow area for adult learning opportunities. So people can come in, they would have the technology to be able to put in job applications, get their driver's license, the different things like that. All the wonderful things that the library district does for adult education opportunities. We want to provide that here. And we also have the other area in yellow there, it says wellness. This space can also be utilized for just about anybody in the community. If people want to come and have a historic building in Besmer so close to the steel mill that has been there since 1899 and have some type of reception or a party or something of that nature, we can also rent that area out. It's going to be set up with coffee bars as well as a facility for yoga instruction. It could be meditation classes. It could be the, the Light Leaf Program for the youth. And we have a couple of youth, small nonprofits that have been wanting to partner with us for a very long time and this will provide that space for them. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you very much. And I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for that presentation. What questions are there from council? Counselor Graham?
Thank you for the presentation. So the million dollars will be used for renovations or what will that be used for since you already own the building?
Yes, the, the budget is right now, it's at 1.9 million. Yes, the, the budget is right now, it's at one point nine million. And that is not quite with the finishes and um, the technology that we need. Obviously, we need huge security and um, and also uh, the infrastructure, copy machines, everything that everybody's going to need.
And how do you plan on sustaining the operations?
So the operations are, are similar to what the United Way is going to do. Every provider and resource that's in the building will pay a rent. And we, we own that building, so we're starting from ground zero, which puts us in very good position. Um, we will also be providing um, the resources available to the different programs that also bring in a revenue stream. Every single one of our grants, we have about thirteen grants right now, and every one of them has a level of, of operating costs.
Other questions? Counselor Mastry?
So your grants are ongoing? They're endless?
They're not, no grant is endless, but they are, I have very strong grants that are part of the state and federal systems um, that are five years with um, the opportunity to, to re-up in five years.
And do you have a grant writer on staff?
I don't have a grant writer on staff. Um, that's a conversation I'd love to have sometime. We actually have been utilizing the grant program through the Colorado Consortium for prescription drug abuse prevention, and they have basically allowed programs like ours to be able to hire grant writers, and they pay for it. So that is really, they, they've been amazing, and that's how we've been able to get here.
What about the parking?
So the parking, that's a great question. Um, there is not great parking on the streets. I have been trying to obtain the, like, the vacant lot across the street. Um, Dr. Garbisa owns that and doesn't seem very willing to part with it just yet. I say just yet because we're working on it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor Warner?
Oh, hi Sarah, thanks. Um, I'm all for this. You guys do great work, and um, I think it's in a, a perfect location for folks that really need your help. Um, I kind of tromped around there with Dr. Nuenberg a few times, and that area is really accessible for those people that you're looking to help. Thanks a lot for doing that.
Keith, thank you.
Um, so Ms. Solano, the whole project is one point nine million, but how much is this ARPA proposal for?
Separate proposal is for one million.
And how are you going to make up the nine hundred thousand?
Um, I already have the other half in grant funding.
Mayor?
Yeah, this is a proposal that's been uh, considered by the city and by the pillars and by the internal uh, review team. Um, they looked at all the ARPA proposals, and for much like the reason we held the United Way back, because of requests and the amount of the requests, we wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to consider other measures that the community would bring forward and try to make a difference and try to prioritize which ones we thought would make the most difference in the community. And I'm convinced that we've got to have organizations like this and a facility like this if we want to really make a dent in the homelessness problem and, and in the addiction problem that we've got here. Because it'll provide services and will give these people an opportunity to change their, their situation in life. Not to mention that I think it'll be a, a good amenity for the Besmer community to have this kind of facility there where you have some activity going there and some renovation, and perhaps that'll encourage some of the other building owners to renovate their facilities as well. So uh, parking obviously is a little bit of an issue. I'm not sure how many of your clients uh, drive cars, or whether most of it's walk-in traffic or those kind of things, but as we look to redevelop the community, we're going to have to take a good, hard look at our parking regulations because we can't allow, you know, the lack of parking to say we're not going to let you develop this property. Um, you know, most other communities, people are, yeah, Pueblo's a little spoiled because if we can't park in right, right at the front door, you know, we're not going in, but I mean, we have to get away from that, and it's healthy for us to walk a block or so and park a block away, uh, you know, uh, to, even if we have to walk that distance to uh, to do business somewhere. So we're going to look at those parking regulations from the city's perspective, but I think this obviously was a commercial area in Pueblo for a long, long period of time. This will bring back some of that vitality, I think, to the, to, to that area of town that uh, that we need for, for some time. And we've had discussions with the contractor, we've met with the architect, and we've again said, we're not going to pay for a grocery store. You know, we're not gonna, we're not going to help do that. But so the building can be done in phases, and the phases that deal with the drug addiction and the homelessness, the showers and those kind of things, they can be done in phases so that the whole project doesn't have to be done one, at once to make parts of it successful. So we've uh, talked with the architect, talked with the contractor, and we're satisfied that uh, for a million dollars, we can provide a lot of services to this targeted community, these targeted communities. So we're, we're recommending a million dollars for this project as well.
Other questions or comments? So the direction then is needed to have this as well. Um, how would we like to move forward? Would we like to just have it on the same first reading as the United Way one, which would be the first reading on January twenty-third? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Yeah, that's fine.
Counselor Graham? Counselor Tenzio? Counselor Flores? Counselor Mastry? Counselor Warner?
Yes.
Great. So that's what it, it'll be the first, on first presentation, January twenty-third. Thank you. Thank you. Um, last on our agenda, um, I want to recognize that this is going to be the last city council board and commission update for this year. I know that some boards and commissions in the city don't necessarily meet during the holidays, so there's not going to be a lot of, I'm sure, updates, but just wanted to hold space for that. Um, Counselor Graham, did you want to start?
I don't have many updates.
Counselor Tenzio? Counselor Flores?
Uh, I don't have a whole lot, except that we finally met uh, for the Southern, uh, it's called the um, the Front Range Passenger Rail District. We finally had a retreat. And uh, we finally met for the first time. So there's not a lot to report other than we now have hired a new, like, an executive director. Uh, we've got our policies and our bylaws in place, and uh, we're probably going to be moving rapidly going forward. So that's all I have.
Counselor Mastry?
I'm on the Airport Advisory Committee, and we haven't had any in the past two months. I'd also like to withdraw, oh, from the airport. Still didn't go, from the Airport Advisory Committee, um, due to my employment and their middle-of-the-day meetings, I, I, uh, it'd be better used with someone who can attend those meetings.
Mayor?
Say she doesn't want to be considered for the Airport Advisory Committee, right?
Yes.
All of you got an email from me today, hopefully, indicating that these are the appointments that come up. So I think we'd like to have a, a council representative there. I don't see that on my list. Here it is.
Vicente is also on there.
Counselor uh, Martinez Ortega is, is a member of the Air Force Adv- or Airport Advisory Committee. Uh, but we can take you off there for sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else interested in serving on that? Yeah?
I'll do it if no one else will.
Pardon me?
I'll do it if no one else will. What, what, do you know when they meet?
Every, uh, the last Tuesday. It's either the third, the third Tuesday or the fourth Tuesday of every month.
Okay. At noon? Okay.
Um, I just have a brief update for the Commission on Housing and Homelessness. Um, I will say that uh, the Rescue Mission has been extraordinarily busy during the winter uh, spell. I have heard that um, they actually filled so many beds that they actually had to put some of the folks um, actually like double bunking and, and on the floor, using mattresses on the floor. So I know that they've been super busy with um, that, and they were also able to hire some extra um, staff. So I know when Melanie was here before, she talked a little bit about how they were unable to um, hire staff and therefore like, couldn't have as many people like, in the nighttime come in because of lack of staff, but they've been able to hire more staff, which is um, allowed for increased capacity for beds both in the temporary housing arena and the, their programmatic housing piece. Um, so really good news for the Rescue Mission there. And that's all that I have. I wanted to say that this is also my last work session, um, possibly as chair, and it's been an honor to serve you guys, even though it's been crazy. So thanks for putting up with me as chair. Otherwise, I conclude this work session at six fifty.